So I just want to ask though that you hold your questions until I do get through the entire presentation and again, we will have plenty of time. You may have picked up on your way in a pink card. You can use this to jot down questions as I go through the presentations if you want to, if you don't want to forget it, or if you're too shy to ask your question, somebody can collect this later and ask your question for you. So that's what that's for. So there are two important issues that I want to talk about tonight and that I want to make sure you have an understanding about. One is community integration, including employment for people with disabilities. And I know you've heard that term, community integration. It's being talked about a lot, but that's one of the important issues that I want to talk about. And the other is something called conflict-free case management. And that's a more difficult, complex situation to describe to you, but it's important that you have some understanding of it. And so I'm going to spend a little bit of time just kind of explaining both of these things and then we're going to talk about what is the impact on CCBDD and how is this affecting us going forward? The first issue, again, community integration. So as I said, we've long talked about community integration. It's always been part of our CCBDD mission to provide services in the community. So what's happening now? Why is there this even greater push towards more community integration? There's three reasons really, and these three reasons are coming out of national trends. These are not things that are originating here in Cuyahoga County or are unique to Cuyahoga County. These are national trends, national issues coming out of big agencies. The first is something called the Olmsted decision. And the Olmsted decision was a Supreme Court decision back in 1999 that basically said people with disabilities have the right to receive their services in the community. And that decision is overseen by the United States Department of Justice. So it's their job to go around and make sure that all the different states in the country are in fact providing opportunities for people with disabilities to receive supports in the community. And what's happened in just the last few years is they, the Department of Justice has gone around to several states. They have not come to Ohio, but they have been to several states where they have thought, you know, that you said to those states, you're really not doing a good enough job of providing enough opportunities for people to receive supports in the community. And so they issued findings and those states have to respond to that and do a plan of correction and make improvements. Now, there's nothing to say that if, if the Department of Justice came here tomorrow, they may say that we're doing okay, but it, there's a chance that if they were to come here, they might also be able to find, because it's a, they would look at the entire state. Again, it wouldn't be unique to Cuyahoga County, that they could have findings here in Ohio as well. So that's just one of the areas, one of the trends that's kind of driving all this talk about community integration. The second place that this is coming from is something called the Employment First Initiative. And hopefully you've all heard of Employment First also already. Employment First, it was a, an executive order signed by Governor Kasich back in 2012 that says more or less, employment should be the preferred and priority outcome for people, for working age Ohioans with disabilities. Now, it does not say that it should be the only option. It just says that it should be a priority, meaning that we need to think about it, we need to talk about it, we need not assume that people with disabilities don't want to work or shouldn't work or couldn't work, but we need to stop and think about it. And, and that's what Employment First is really about. And even though this was signed by our governor, remember I said these are national trends, at the same time that Governor Kasich signed his executive order, governors in 35 other states across the country also signed similar executive orders. So this really is a national movement, even though the exact term Employment First is in Ohio, was an Ohio executive order. So that's a second thing that's really driving this push towards greater community integration and more employment opportunities. And then the last thing, the last trend is coming from another federal agency called the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, or CMS. And CMS, as their name implies, governs the Medicaid program in the entire, for the entire country. And because we utilize Medicaid waivers to fund day services and residential services, we have to follow the rules that are set by this agency, CMS. And so last year, in early 2014, they issued a new set of rules, an updated set of rules that talked about the fact that in order for states to receive Medicaid reimbursement via the waiver program for services provided, those services have to be provided in quote "community settings." And so the big question is, you know, so what is a community setting? And they give some indication of what that is, but we're largely left to figure these things out on our own. But I just want you to know at this point, that push is coming also from the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. So all three of these things are kind of lining up, pointing us in the direction, again, community integration and greater opportunities for employment. So what does it really mean? And again, even though I've just told you that there's these three trends, what, why are they all, why have these trends developed over the past few years? What's really driving this? And the way I describe what is happening is this, so that when you hear that there is an expectation for increased opportunities for community integration and employment, here's where that idea is really coming from. There has been a perception, again, not unique to Cuyahoga County, this is across the country, but there has been a perception by these agencies that I talked about. And it's probably true, at least to some extent, but there's this perception that over the years, we in the service delivery, services and supports for people with developmental disabilities, have developed an over-reliance on sheltered facility-based programs to provide day activities and employment for people. And so that's the perception. And like I said, it's probably true, at least to some extent, or at least in some places. And it is absolutely true, as many of you remember, at one time there were no options for people with disabilities to do anything productive or meaningful during the day. And of course, our adult activity centers and the development of those programs has been extremely beneficial, but there's this feeling now, we're in 2015, that there are, or at least there should be, other kinds of opportunities that could be offered to people, that they might be interested in doing something different during the day than going to a sheltered facility. And so the way I describe this slide is that in the top row here, in the past, there was a perception that there was an almost automatic assumption, almost automatic assumption, that a person with a developmental disability would graduate from high school and they would go to a sheltered facility, in our case, an adult activity center. So someone might graduate on Friday, they'd go to Beechwood AAC on Monday. And that was the way things happened and it was an almost automatic assumption that that's what would happen. And other kinds of ideas weren't really talked about with that student as they got older and got ready to graduate. And so what, whoops, I'm sorry. What we're saying now is instead, at the time of graduation, we should be stopped, or prior to graduation, we should be stopping and having a conversation about what are some other possibilities, including a sheltered facility that might be appropriate for some people, but does somebody want to work? Do you work in an office? Spend time in the community? Are there other things available that that person might want to spend their day doing rather than just making this assumption that they're going to the adult activity center? And so that's really going to be the difference going forward, is largely just that conversation and making sure we're stopping and having that conversation, not just with people who are getting ready to graduate from high school, but people of all ages and just making sure we're asking, is there something else that you might like to do? Would you like to hear about some of these other opportunities? If the answer is no, that's fine, but we're going to start to be asking those kinds of questions. And of course, the Cuyahoga County Board of Developmental Disabilities needs to make sure that these kinds of opportunities are even available out there. And that is one of our challenges right now. And that's why in my opening comments, I stress the fact that we really are in the beginning, early stages of some change, because it's up to us to make sure, if we're saying we want to stop and talk to people about what are some other opportunities, we need to make sure those opportunities are available. That's up to us, that's a challenge that we're facing right now. So that is the first issue, trying to explain what is community integration and employment and where is that coming from? Moving on, another important issue that is driving change in our field in the coming years is another portion of the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, or CMS, another portion of their rule that addresses something called conflict-free case management. And this is a very strange term and I'm going to do my best to explain it to you. But you see right here, county boards of DD, we currently provide direct services and we currently provide support administration. Our agency does both of those things currently. The rule says, this CMS rule about conflict-free case management says that the same entity that develops an individual's plan and authorizes services cannot also be the entity that provides the service. They view this as a conflict of interest because the person writing the plan and authorizing the services is also, has an interest in the same agency that's providing the services and drawing down the revenue. And we're a government agency, so that's, we have a problem with that. But in reality, in a lot of states, they might have private entities doing both these things and it really might be a conflict of interest because someone's, an agency is allowed to sort of write their own ticket or write their own check. So what is the implication of this? As I said, the Cuyahoga County Board right now, we provide direct services, right? We provide services in adult activity centers, we supervise enclaves, our staff work in those enclaves, our staff help people find jobs and provide job coaching. All of that is considered direct services. We do that. Most county boards of DD in Ohio also provide those kinds of services. Not all, some have gotten out of the business of being a direct service provider, but most of the 88 counties in Ohio do this still, just like we do here in Cuyahoga County. All county boards in Ohio, all 88 county boards, including ours, provide support administration. We all do that function. So the implication is that per the strict interpretation of that CMS rule, county boards in Ohio cannot continue to be both direct services providers and providers of support administration. The implication of the rule is we could not continue to do both of these things going forward. And so because it is very important that county boards of DD maintain that support administration function, because it is directly responsible for controlling how our local levy dollars are spent, if forced to, every single county and, every single county board in Ohio will choose to continue to maintain this function. And the implication of that is that we could not maintain the direct service function. And so I know that's, that's very concerning and it's concerning to me as well, it's concerning to my colleagues and fellow superintendents as well. And so is anything being done about this? Yes, I want to tell you that there are efforts underway to fight this, to try to get CMS to understand that we're different in Ohio, we have this county board system, it's not really a conflict. We're a governmental entity trying to get their attention and paying, to try to get them to pay attention to us and allow us to continue to do both of these things. Our Ohio Association of County Boards, they represent all county boards in Ohio, all 88 county boards belong to this agency. And so when things like this come up, that's their job is to help us to lobby and fight back about some of these things. They are working with a lobbying firm in Washington DC who is attempting to make inroads directly with CMS and with the US Congressional Representatives about this issue of conflict-free case management with the intent of, again, getting CMS to allow us to continue to provide both of these roles or at the very least buy us a better, longer period of time to, at which to make this transition. At the same time, recognizing in the event that that doesn't work, legal action is also being considered with the goal of that same outcome of allowing us to continue to provide both those roles or to at least get us a longer timeframe. So legal action is being considered and looked at. And the DODD Director, John Martin, some of you know who John Martin is, he's the Director of the State Department of Developmental Disabilities. He recognizes that CMS's strict interpretation of this rule, it, it provides for much too short of a timeframe for us to make changes like this in a responsible manner. So he too is working hard with CMS to try to negotiate a better outcome or at least a longer timeframe. So those efforts are very real, very much underway today. I wish I had good news and I could say I absolutely know for sure that those things have worked and we're going to get that, but I just don't know that today. And when I scheduled these meetings, I had very much hoped that I would know that. Once we have a final answer on that, I certainly will be getting that information out to everybody immediately, as soon as, as soon as I know what it is. Now, this is a federal issue and many of you I know have spoken with your state representatives and that's very important too. We feel like we have gotten our state legislature to understand this issue and to try to put some language in the state budget in favor of, again, allowing us to continue these rules, but this really is a federal issue and only the federal, it can only be changed at the federal level. So we have information, hopefully you picked it up at the desk when you came in, that you can use, it's like a template letter that you can use to write to your US Congressional Representatives to express your feelings on this issue. And I think it has, it has an indication of who the Congressional Representatives are and their address. It also has their phone number. If you would prefer calling, you can call them. You'll probably talk to an aide, but that's okay, they'll still get the information that you called. But it also provides like an opening paragraph and a closing paragraph, but it's important that in the middle part of the letter, you put your own personal feelings and experiences in there because you all have different personal experiences, they're all different, but they're all very powerful. And so it's important that rather than just everybody send the same exact letter, it's important that you personalize that and tell your own story to those lawmakers and let them know how you feel about this. So that's very important. Also, I would, I believe we have plenty of those, so if you know people who were unable to be here tonight, please feel free to take additional copies and give them to your friends and neighbors and anybody who might be interested in writing a letter. Okay, moving on, just talking about looking towards the future. So how does, how do we see this impacting us going forward? And again, I want to remind you, it's very important, we're in the very early stages of making any changes. We're looking at a lot of things, we haven't made any major decisions. We are committed to increasing opportunities for community integration and employment. In fact, as I said earlier, our mission statement has always been about that. Our current mission statement says that we will support and empower people with developmental disabilities to live, learn, work, and play in the community. And that "in the community" phrase has always been a part of our mission in one way or another. We've already moved our schools and early childhood, whoops, yes, we've already moved our schools and early childhood centers towards more integrated models. One important thing I want to tell you about is we are focusing a lot of our time and energy on transition age youth, transition age students. And this hasn't always been easy. We have 31 different school districts in Cuyahoga County and we're working really hard to develop good relationships with all 31. But we feel that today's high school graduates are very accustomed to being in an integrated setting. And what we find many times is they're not really interested in entering a sheltered setting in the first place. So it's kind of a good group of people for us to focus a lot of time and energy on because they want to be in the community, they want jobs. Not every single person that graduates from high school, but a large number of them. As I said, they're very accustomed to having been in an integrated school setting and so that's important for them to continue. We're also trying to get involved with that group of people earlier in their high school career. That's something in the past we hadn't done a really good job of, to be honest. We, we didn't get involved until it was pretty close to graduation time. And due to some resource limitations, it's hard for us to just up and do that, it's a little bit of a process. But we are slowly but surely getting in there earlier and earlier with a goal of one day hopefully starting to work with high school students at around age 14. That's our goal. Okay, another thing that, that we have done is that our enrollment in our AACs, as you probably know, has declined, been declining since 2012. And that's not necessarily a good thing or a bad thing, except if we are forced to phase out of our role as a service provider in the future, I'm, I'm kind of glad that this is the case because it just will affect fewer people than it would have otherwise. And so in some other county boards where they're continuing to enroll more people, it just means more people that they might have to un-enroll at some later date if that were to happen. I also want to spend a minute talking about person-centered planning. It's very important that we spend time and take the time to work with every single individual. As I said before, when I was talking about the letters, all of your situations are different. All of your family members, your sons and daughters' situations is different. And what's most important here is we go through, trying to possibly look at more community integration or employment options, is that we sit down and talk with each and every one of you and your family members and make sure we want to do what you want to do. And we're not really interested in, in trying to push things that people aren't interested in. We're, we want to respect your choices, we want to have those conversations, but again, that's a very time-consuming process and that's where, again, I'm saying we're in the very early stages of change and this is going to take time for us to do this well and to do this right. Another thing I want to mention is seniors programming. For many years now, probably about 20 years, we have developed a really nice network of seniors program providers out in the community. And many of these are very much community integrated. So seniors with developmental disabilities are attending seniors programming alongside seniors who do not have developmental disabilities and it works out very nicely for many people. We have about 163 people currently who attend that kind of programming. And I mention it only because hopefully if your son or daughter or family member is of a certain age, say 60 or so, hopefully someone has mentioned this idea to you before and that you know that it is a possibility. And it really is a nice option for some people as they get older. They tend to be slower-paced, smaller kinds of settings and some of them can provide some medical services, meal nutrition services. And so I just mentioned it as, excuse me, it might be a nice option for some people as they get older. And then the last thing I want to say here, excuse me, is that the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities is in the process of creating some new service definitions that will incentivize or reward employment for providers. And so part of why we think we haven't been more successful in finding employment for people, although we've been pretty successful, but the way that the funding works is that it really doesn't provide a reward or incentive for helping someone to find and keep a job. And so there's some service definitions that they're working on down in Columbus to change that would hopefully improve that and would improve the likelihood that a provider who's working with an individual trying to find a job could be more successful. Okay, another, still looking towards the future, although this is something that's already happened, but it has implications for the future. Hopefully you know by now that back in January, we combined our existing adult activities department and our employment services department into one department that we call Employment and Community Alternatives. And I want to introduce, just in case you haven't had the chance to meet them, Jackie Casperisen is our Chief Operating Officer and Dr. Janet Keeler is our new General Manager of Employment and Community Alternatives. So if you have a chance, excuse me, say hello to them before you leave tonight. But we combined these departments with the idea that if we really want to achieve some new and different outcomes regarding increased community integration and employment, we wanted new leadership, new ideas for success. And we knew that we have a tremendous resource in both of these departments, both human resources and other resources, and we wanted to combine them so that they would all be working towards shared goals and outcomes. And this new department is already doing some pretty neat things. One of them is something that we call the Integrated Community Supports Project. And I know this slide is kind of busy, but I'm going to explain what all those pictures mean. We, I keep talking about community integration and the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services says that settings have to be integrated, but the reality is, they don't exactly know what they're looking for there. There's a lot that has to be figured out. Again, we're in the early stages of change, so there's a lot that has to be figured out. So what we're doing on a very small scale, we asked for four volunteers at each of our eight centers and those are, each, those four people are of all different kinds of abilities and interests. And they were just four people at each site who said, they, yeah, they have an interest maybe in going out more into the community, seeing what's out there, seeing that what they might like to do. And they maybe didn't even really know what they might like to do and that was okay, they just thought they were willing to give this a try. And so we spent some intensive time with them, our staff did, taking them out, really for two, two straight weeks, every day. They went out in the community and did some exploration. And so that's what these pictures show. There's 32 people total, right, four people at eight AACs. And over the course of those two weeks, they actually explored 164 different activities and places of interest and tried to narrow down, what are you really, what might you really be interested in doing out here? So somebody said, I'd like to take a dance class, but when they really went to take the dance class, after a couple days, they decided, I don't really want to take a dance class after all. I didn't realize what it would be like doing it every day because I never had the opportunity to do that all the time. And so they've really done a nice job of putting the time in to really explore what somebody might like to do. And then of course, 164 places and activities is an awful lot. And so after those two weeks were up, they asked people and worked together to try to narrow it down into a more manageable number, I think two or three places each. And now they are actually going out and doing those things throughout the week at time when they otherwise would have been at the AAC. They're supervised with staff, they go, accompanied by staff. And we're using this experience to keep track of just what do we need to know in order to expand something like this to more people who might be interested in it. And we're keeping track of our successes, barriers, what does it cost? How, what are the staffing needs required for something like this? What are the transportation needs? We're keeping track of all that, all that kind of data so we can be prepared to roll this out to more and more people as, as we can. And the, we hope that we'll have some better information that we can share with all of you, maybe in a month or two after this program has had a little bit more time. And we would share that with you, but the early indications are that people are really enjoying it and it seems like it's successful. it's successful, and they're learning things, and it really is providing people with a nice way to spend their days and weeks. And they're still spending time at the Adult Activities Center as well. So that's what the Community, Integrated Community Support Project is. And then another kind of neat thing that's happening with, in conjunction with both our support administration and our Employment and Community Alternatives Department, is that they are asking people, and you may have experienced this, but they are asking people to identify where they think they are on this pathway to employment. And this pathway to employment is actually a Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities document. This is their language, and they are actually requiring that county boards ask people to identify where they think they are on this path and to put that into each individual service plan. And it's hard because, again, everybody is different, and sometimes you might read these four, these four different possibilities here and think, well, none of those really exactly match how I feel about this. And so just know that, you know, we are going to ask you to pick the one that closes, matches your wishes and desires most closely, but you can also ask that you add your own specific language to it as well. So you can, you can add a sentence or two that would help clarify what you mean. But we have been asking people this, and remember that we serve about 4,000 adults in Cuyahoga County, and a fairly significant number of people that we have asked, we haven't gotten to everybody yet. We've just started asking these questions, I think, in April. But a fairly significant number of people that we have asked have identified that they are either on Path 1 or Place 1, I have a job but I need support to keep it, or I want to get a better job, or Path, Place 2, I want to work, help me get a job. And so these are, you know, people who self-identified that this is what they would like, and we feel a responsibility to work with them, again, in a very person-centered way, to help them achieve their personal employment goals. So we're actually very excited about this. We think this is good news that so many people are, in fact, interested in this. And part of the reason why I want to share this is we also understand that this is not an option for everybody. Not everybody is going to select Place 1 and Place 2, and that's okay. But we're happy to have a significant number of people who have self-identified on those places that we can focus on and work with to help them find a job. And so again, we recognize that's not going to be the case for everybody, but for the folks that we've already heard from who've said, I want to work, help me get a job, or I have a job, but I want to get a different one, you know, we've got our work cut out for us going forward, but we're, we're interested and up for that challenge and looking forward to it. Okay, just a, one last slide about the future. In this role, I'm trying to depict, or this slide, I'm trying to depict the role of the County Board of DD. And so it, it feels like there's things happening that could threaten our future role, and I understand that. But what I want to portray for you is that our role over the years has actually expanded. And at one time, we may have been viewed by our public as really just a provider of our adult activities centers. That's how people know us and our transportation service. They see our buses around town. And we really are so much more than that, and we have been for quite a long time. Since we've started utilizing Medicaid waivers, those waivers really have opened up a lot of possibilities and a lot of choices for people that didn't exist before we used those waivers. And so even though they come with a lot of red tape and baggage, they really do provide opportunities and funding for those opportunities that would not exist otherwise. And because of that, our role as a Board of Developmental Disabilities has expanded over the years. And so we're involved, as I said, it's up to us to ensure that those choices and opportunities are available to people. And those choices will likely continue to include some facility-based options for people who need them. There's not an expectation that every single person is just going to be out in the community in this vague sense of community. There will continue to need to be facility-based programs. And I had mentioned very first thing that we're not here to talk about closing our AACs, but I do want to mention that as our enrollment continues to decline, and I said this at our last Town Hall meeting, it may at some point in the future become necessary for us to talk about some consolidation of our centers. And I want to assure you that's not being talked about now. When and if that time comes, we would certainly bring you all together again, talk about it, get your input, and give you plenty of notice or indication that that is going to happen. But it's not being talked about now, but I did at least want to put out there that that is a very real possibility if these changes do end up impacting us. So our, again, one of our roles is to ensure those opportunities and choices are available, including facility-based options for people who need and want them. We're also working hard all the time, we've been doing this for a long time, this is nothing new, to build partnerships and an inclusive community. And so we're working with community leaders, area employers, our private provider partners, and trying to ensure that there is a community available to people that is safe and welcoming and that employment opportunities are safe and welcoming for people with disabilities. And so that's something that, that we spend a lot of time building those relationships, building those partnerships. We also work on planning for a whole life, right? If you are, if your son or daughter, family member is enrolled on the IO waiver, you're likely, he or she is also receiving residential services. So hopefully when you're sitting down to do your service plan with the support administrator, you're not just talking about work or day program or community inclusion, you're talking about your son or daughter's whole life and how everything fits together. And that's, can be very challenging, but again, it's a very important role that we play with our support administrators. And then finally, again, with our support administrators, we arrange for and monitor that services are in fact safe and that people feel satisfied with the services that they are receiving. And I, I do want to mention that should we be forced to make this choice about not providing direct services anymore, that function will become even more important, and I expect that as a county board role, that will even grow further and that we will be doing more to provide some oversight and monitoring of our private provider community. Okay, so I shared a lot of information. I went longer than I said I was going to too. I'm sorry about that. Five key takeaways. If you don't remember anything else from tonight, remember these five things. One, we have no plans to close any AACs right now. It's not being discussed, it's not up for discussion. We're in the very early stages of changes, and therefore no major decisions have been made. Community integration is core to our mission, always has been and continues to be. Person-centered planning, we will adapt to changes using a person-centered approach that is sensitive to each individual's needs and wants. Choice is important to us, and we want to take the time to plan person by person. The future is about expanding and offering, offering opportunities, and again, that's our, one of our big roles and challenges going forward is to help develop those opportunities. And we are committed to working together with all of you. The County Board of DD is not going anywhere. We're still here, we're still strong, and we're committed to working with all of you through all of this. And last night, because it was before the Cavs games, I said, we're all in, but I guess that's not very funny anymore. It was kind of funny last night. Okay, last, I just wanted to say a quick word about staying up to date, staying informed. We've tried to come up with lots of different ways that you can do that. We have a listening line, you have handout about that. You can sign up, there's a sign-up card that you could have picked up that if you want to receive our newsletters electronically. You can call our public information line, visit our website. One thing that was brought up last night, you can join your PTCU at the center that you're associated with. That's an excellent way of staying informed and staying involved and also feeling supported by other parents, right, Rich? They'd all be happy to have more members. And then also in your, in your handouts, this yellow paper, Dr. Keeler, who I just introduced, is doing a series of parent and family forums at each adult activities center. So it would be a smaller scale, you know, you could go and talk to her more on a one-on-one basis. Likely you would be talking about a lot of the same things that we're talking about here tonight. And again, I would encourage you, if you could, to share this information also with any of your friends or neighbors who weren't able to be here tonight, because this could be a good way, a good substitute for them if they weren't able to come to this tonight.